All right. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, everyone, for being here for this May 24, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We've got a couple of quick things tonight before we get started. The first is that I wanted to introduce Jim Lowery. He is the new governmental affairs consultant for the Greater Birmingham Association of Home Builders. So, Mr. Lowery, thank you for joining us tonight, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you. It was just a courtesy call. I wanted to come by and say hello. We're always doing so many things in Homewood. I wanted to introduce myself. Glad to be here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of a check. Ms. Andrus, are you doing this?
Sure. Yes, I would like to bring up Mr. Gary Schiffer and Mr. Paul Beasley Schaefer.
Sheffer.
Schaefer. Yeah, okay. I said shh. I went through all the vowels.
It was going to go badly there for a second.
These are my cohorts at the Kiwanis Club of Mountain Brook and Homewood, and Gary is the current president, Paul's the incoming president. And this project has been in the works for a very long time, and so I'm going to let Gary take it from here.
Awesome. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Let me get my 72 pages of notes here. No, actually...
Brian, do you have that PowerPoint ready to go?
Yeah. No, thank you all. And I'm Gary Schaefer, like she said, president of the Kiwanis Club here in Homewood, Mountain Brook. We've been here 65 years, serving the community, just like Kiwanis, and their mission is to serve the children of the world, one child at a time. So, we try to live to that. And one of our previous members, Ken Ebaugh...I'm sorry, Paul. Sorry, I was going to introduce you two.
She did. I'm covered.
But Ken Ebaugh was a 40-year member of our club, and he had a servant's heart, was a past president, and distinguished and recognized for all his contributions that he gave to us. He was an avid exerciser. And we wanted to do something for him, to memorialize what he did and what he meant for our club. So, with that, there's going to be a crosswalk designation for him on Lakeshore by Brookwood, and I think signs are in the works. Jennifer has carried that load for us and helped quite a bit to see that through. So, hopefully, in the near term, we'll have a big ceremony and presentation to recognize that and to open it up. So, with that, we...
There. Do you want to come up and let them present to you, and I'll take a picture?
As long as you can cash it, it's okay, right?
All right, ready? One, two, three. All right.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary and Paul. We appreciate it. All right. With that, we will move to our invocation, and tonight we have Reverend Edward Steele from the Union Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Steele, if you would come up, and everyone, please stand, and we'll follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you right now in the name of Jesus, thanking you, Father, for allowing us to be able to assemble. Now, Father, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting. Let us agree to disagree, but to agree in love and to disagree in more love. Father, I ask you to bless each and every heart that is represented by each and every ward here, Father. Ask them, Father, to put themselves first and then their people up front, that they may represent them, Father, not only the people in that district, Father, but you. And it's in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. We give you all your glory, honor, and praise in every heart, said, "Amen."
Thank you. Everyone face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. We appreciate it. All right. So, with that, I will call this meeting to order, and Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Counselor Gualtin?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Neils?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Everybody's here. You got it, Paul.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the reading in the minutes. We've got two sets tonight that have been emailed out to everybody. The first is for our council meeting from May 10, 2021, and the second from our council work session. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of...we'll start with the council work session minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. And entertain a similar motion with regard to the May 10, 2021 minutes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. All right. That brings us to board vacancies. I don't think we have any of the thing on those tonight. I think we have some that are coming up our next meeting, so we'll revisit that then. We do have three additions to the agenda tonight, two to committee referral. The first one is 180521, request for consideration and authorization for the mayor to sign lease for space on the third floor of Homewood City Hall. That will go to finance and comes from myself. Second item, 190521, request for consideration of the sale of property located at 311 Oxmoor Road. That one will also go to finance committee and is also from myself. And then one item to other new business, 170521, request for consideration of ABC 050 Retail Beer Off Premises Only and 070 Retail Table Wine Off Premises Only licenses for SD Investments and Development LLC DBA Homewood Shell located at 208A Oxmoor Road, and ABC 11 Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Package License for SD Investments and Developments LLC DBA Homewood Package located at 208B Oxmoor Road. That comes to us from Melody Salter. So, with those additions, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George Gualtin, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Thank you very much. There are no items on the consent agenda tonight. We do have an item, though, that we need to take up in executive session, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation, excuse me.
Move to go into executive session.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we need to give us our instruction, Mr. Kendrick?
The discussion will be limited to pending litigation.
And I imagine this will be 10, 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, we'll be back in just a minute. There we go. All right. So, if someone would move to...
Move to go into regular session.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Gualtin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 11 to 0. We're back in regular session. Thank you very much, everybody. All right. That brings us to the old business agenda. First item, 130221, public hearing continued from May 10, 2021, for consideration of changes to the landscaping and tree requirements brought to us by Counselors Gualtin and Andrus. This is the tree ordinance that has moved around a good bit. It is now back to us. We started the public hearing on May 10 while the BEZ department was reviewing some, the latest draft of it, and trying to work through some of those things and find some tweaks that needed to be made to make it more workable. And so, that's kind of where we are. They've been meeting about that. I do want to move forward with the public hearing tonight, if anyone wants to speak to it, because we've got some members of the BEZ department that are reviewing the ordinance here tonight, and I'd like them to hear any comments that anyone would like to make, so that they can take those into account as they put together an updated draft that we can, you know, move forward with and get to a final resolution on this in the coming weeks. So, with that, the public hearing is already open. I would ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak to this item. We'll start with here present, and then we'll check on Zoom.
And President Wyatt, do you have a sign and sheet?
Thank you very much. Yeah, if you come up, please, please use the sign and sheet. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to it? All right. If not, is there anyone on Zoom? If you would hit the raise your hand button, then we'll get to you. And if not, then we won't have anybody speak to it.
Doesn't look like it.
I'm sorry, what, Brian?
Doesn't look like it online.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, then, with that, since there's no one to speak to, we will close the public hearing, and then we are going to, unless there's an objection, send this back to P and D, so that P and D can keep an eye on it and get regular updates from BEZ. And hopefully, in a few weeks here, we'll have an updated version. All right. So, we'll send that back to P and D.
Send it to P and D.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to 040421, public hearing set for tonight, for consideration to rezone the northern portion of 260 Oxmoor Road from Agur to C5. The applicant is, well, the attorney is Chelsea Payne for the owner, ADMA Inc., to permit the construction of a three-story storage facility. This has come to us from Planning Commission with a vote of 9 to 0 for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. All right. So, we, I believe, had, when this was in committee, a number of proffers were made, and since then, we have received a letter from the attorney for the applicant that at least one of those proffers, I believe, is being withdrawn. But I want to confirm that, if someone can do that for me.
President Wyatt, do you want to report out of committee?
Yeah, we probably should do that first. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. The committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer the sign back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Gualtin.
Thank you very much.
How are you doing?
Doing fine. If you will, just give us your name and...
Yeah, my name is Chesley Payne. I'm the attorney that filed this application behalf of my clients, ADMA Inc., the owner of the property at 260 Oxmoor Road. The council is correct. We did make, we did proffer some items at the planning and zoning meeting. The purpose of the project, and of course, not to go over what was already covered in planning and zoning, is to construct on the northern portion of this property a three-story Class A climate-controlled storage facility. In that initial planning and zoning meeting where it was approved, we did discuss making some proffers concerning the construction of the building to match what the renderings were shown to planning and zoning. Currently, the members are still offering to do so. And we've offered to construct or install cameras on the side of the building as well to ensure that there's a safe, secure environment surrounding the structure. The owners are also still willing to proffer that as well. The concern that has come up since that meeting has to do with the proffer to restrict the use of the property to that only of a self-contained storage facility, which, if that was, you know, the use that we represented in the planning and zoning anyway, the question must arise as to why we wish to withdraw that now. And the answer to that is simply, if we proffer that and that becomes part of the zoning of the property, it becomes in and of itself something like a covenant or restriction on the title of this property. And lenders are very, very leery of this. We previously, earlier today, I sent, I think, six letters from six different lenders, and those lenders have all expressed concern with this type of restriction on the use of the property. Certainly not from our standpoint, from their standpoint, that if they're going to accept this property as collateral, they like to have the title to this property be as clear as possible. And putting a use restriction, a permanent use restriction, on this property through the zoning process raises all sorts of questions that would either lead to, one, the denial of funding for this project, or two, an appraiser assigning a lesser value to this property, therefore, reducing the value of collateral to the bank and making this project unworkable from a finance situation. So, after we had an opportunity to go back and do some due diligence of our own, this is why we reached back out to the city council at this point and basically said that we're still willing to construct it in the manner as is previously shown. We're still willing to install the cameras. And the one thing I want to stress to the council is this type of building function really follows form. We're not asking to build a warehouse. We're not asking to build a multi-use facility. We are going to submit plans and specifications to the building official, and once the plans and specifications are submitted, we're really tied to the only one use of this type of building that it can be used for, which is a self-contained storage facility. So, in this manner, just the type of building that's going to be constructed on the property and everything that goes along with it is simply is by its nature going to restrict what this property can be used for going forward in the future. I would tell you that taking down the current structure and building the structure in this place is going to involve a substantial investment by the owners in this case. The owners, the banks, the lenders, and everyone else involved understand that this is the type of structure going, that is going up in this place. Where they get leery and what they are afraid of is to have in some way the collateral that they are accepting from the owners be limited in its use in the future in the event, God forbid, that there's ever a default on any loans associated with this project.
All right. So, just to be clear, that proffer that was made by your clients is now being withdrawn?
That is correct. As to the use of the property.
Okay. If that is the case, then we will have to republish the ordinance without that proffer being included in it and give that notice to the public. So, then we will have to have another public hearing after that, publishing and notice requirements from that, which I'm sure you understand.
Absolutely.
What I want to make sure is that we have whatever the final proffer is, because I don't want to go through this again.
Understood.
You know, once, once stuff has been proffered, it's hard to keep moving on it if it's a moving target.
Absolutely.
So, and if you, if the proffer is what you have set out tonight and nothing else, that's what we need to know, because that's just, we just need to know what to publish in the ordinance, so that, again, we're not, we're not hitting the snag again.
Absolutely. The proffers are stated within the letter that I've said previously.
And there's nothing additional? I know that there was, at some point, some talk about limiting certain uses or anything, or something like that. I just want to make sure there's nothing else that you're including in it that would, something couldn't go there or something like that.
Just those two things. That is correct.
Those two things in the letter.
Stated within the letter.
All right. Okay. So, I am going to let you talk, but let me just go ahead and get this out of the way real quick. Because I've got, we obviously had a public hearing notice. I've got to do this real quick.
It's a non-proffer.
Okay. Well, you can go. Mr. Wolf, if you want to go ahead.
So, I just had a quick question. And in the grand scheme of things, I don't know how big a deal this is for you guys, but there's been ongoing debate concern, whatever, from neighbors for a long time regarding the longstanding defunct gas station that no longer exists, that has a huge monument pole sign on the property as well. So, I guess the question is, you know, all over the city, we've passed sign ordinances over the last several years trying to limit and conform and bring things to a much more aesthetically pleasing state. And so, on that, on that piece of property, there still exists that big Texaco sign, I believe. Is that something you guys are willing to look at bringing down too?
It's not yours.
No.
Yeah, it is. Y'all had litigation with Shader about that.
The Shader one was on Shader's property.
That was the other one. That was already down.
Yeah. This is, this sign belongs to the gas station, and that's in reference...
No, he's talking about the Texaco.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
It's on the southbound exit route?
Yeah.
Right.
It's built on your property.
Right.
But it's for the easement to come into the property. It's their sign.
I think we're talking about two different things.
Oh, they'll make, you're talking about the big one right in the...
Yeah.
There's only one sign there.
That's the only one. That's there.
That sign is there for the easement from the gas station to our property.
It's built on your property?
Yeah.
And you can't...
They gave us an easement to the property.
Yeah. It's just kind of like the Shader sign. Our sign was on Shader's property. You were supposed to send them a letter. You sent us a letter, even though it was on their property. But that was, that was a deal that was done well before we bought the hotel.
Yeah, we were some lawsuit.
Yeah. I know. You sent a letter to us about that sign, but the letter was supposed to have been sent to Mr. Shader. We got the letter. That sign belongs to the gas station.
Okay. And just to be clear, make sure we're talking about apples to apples.
Right. Okay. Just to clarify.
Is, are you saying that the gas station owns the sign?
Yes.
Or the gas station owns the property on which the sign is placed?
The gas station owns that sign.
Okay. But is it on your property is what we're asking?
Right.
It is on your...
But they put that sign there well before we even purchased the hotel.
I understand. I'm just trying to make sure we're talking. I think, I think we're talking about two different things, is the reason I'm asking. The gas station owns the sign. The sign is placed on your property.
Correct.
Did they have an easement?
For an easement, yes.
They have an easement for it?
No, we have an easement in blue.
No, no, they would have the easement.
To be on your property.
If they have a sign on your property, they have an easement.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I meant the entrance. That's what I meant, for the, to come into the...
Are you saying it was a sort of a swap where you had an easement across their property to enter your property?
Yep.
And in exchange, you allowed them to put a sign on your property?
Well, again, this was coordinated well before we bought the hotel.
And by the...
Is this the sign we're talking about?
Yes, that's the one.
That's the one I'm referencing that I've continued to hear about.
Texaco station's been closed for years.
Right.
And it was...
We don't have anything to do with that, yeah.
Yeah. And it was empty for...
But it's on your property.
Understood.
So, you control what's on your property.
They're still remodeling. So, I would assume they're probably going to put their new brand on there.
Well, the, the structure was vacant for more than six months, which I believe means that they have to take it down. It doesn't matter. It's changed ownerships because the amount of time it sat empty without it being, being rebranded lapsed, essentially.
Why don't we do this, since we have to reset this for a public hearing, and this is just something that's just come to our attention?
Sure.
Why don't we take an opportunity to look at that?
It's not coming to your mind. It's been going on for probably 10 years.
It's come to my attention.
Okay.
And so, at this point, since we have to continue this for another public hearing, allow me the time to check on the status of that sign?
That's fair.
And then report back?
That's fine.
To the city council.
That's fine.
Yeah, I guess we're just, since, before we send something back and publish it, I guess...
Correct. And I think that's what you're saying, is before we get to the point of publishing, that we figure out the answer to this question.
Right. Well, is there a reason to hold up publication while we look at the sign issue?
To see if that's a proffer that they're willing to accept.
As part of that.
Correct.
Okay.
If that's...
That's going to be something to do with the gas station.
Yeah. I mean, we're here to talk about...
Yeah. I don't, I don't want us to get off track here. And I realize what you're saying.
Yeah.
If, if there's a chance that that's part of the proffer that is made, then we need to hold up the publication, obviously. If there's not a chance that it's going to be part of the proffer, then, then obviously, the publication can go ahead and be published with, and that, that's sort of where I started this was...
Sure.
We just need to know what the proffer is, so that it can be published and, and we move forward, whether that includes the sign, use, whatever. That, that's what I'm interested in, in learning. And if you need some additional time before that proffer is made, then we can do that. If you don't, then you don't.
All right. At this point, as best as we can tell, and just what I've learned over the past three minutes or so, is that that sign is up due to a pre-existing agreement from before they bought the property at that point. Therefore, I'm not sure we can make such a proffer. If such an agreement is still in effect, and they are still using the easement for access to their property across the adjoining property that, that is owned by the person that actually put the sign up in the first place. So, the point I think I'm trying to make here is, is I don't want to hold up a potential redevelopment of this area based upon a Texaco sign. If, I would rather proceed forward with that, and I would say, at this point, we're probably not able to make such a proffer, because this is the first we've heard of it at this point. And certainly, if we had had some foreknowledge about this, we'd be more than happy to investigate that.
Well, I recognize it's the first you've heard of it, and that, that's fine. All I'm asking is what, what profit? If that's the answer, that's the answer. I...
Right.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Would it work if we carried it over on this agenda for you to come back to give us a definitive answer on if that's a proffer? I mean, that...
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's sort of what I'm talking about, is if you want some additional time, then, you know, and come back on...
We're talking about one meeting.
Yeah, one meeting.
My name is Mike Patel, 260 Oxmoor Road. Just to clarify, we have no ownership on that sign, and we have no interest in having that sign there. So, if the gas station owners want to remove it, that's fine. It's completely fine. But when we had a sign on Mr. Shader's property years ago, Mr. Kendrick sent us a letter about it, rather than the owners of the property. So, I just feel like, at this situation, if the sign needs to be rectified, it should be sent to the gas station owners, since they own that gas station. It's been defaulted for a long time.
Sure.
Again, you know, just to clarify.
I think the, I think the question, the reason Mr. Wolverton was asking that question...
The property owner is responsible for what's on your property, not the service station.
So, when the Shader's property situation came up, why did we get a letter?
I don't know. That's 10 years ago. But I'm telling you, this time, we need to talk about this again. You're responsible for violations of the sign ordinance that's on your property.
And it's being brought up now?
No. Hold on, hold on. Look.
No, it's been brought up many times with you.
Here's, here's the deal.
When? I was just the first.
Here's, here's the deal. We're going to...
That's just not true.
Hey, here's where we are. If you want a couple of weeks to do it, I'm happy to take it, move it a couple of weeks. I think the, to answer your question, Mr. Patel, is whether you own the sign or not, you have some legal rights with regard to that sign because you own the property. There, your attorney needs time to look at that, and I understand that. If y'all want to wait a couple of weeks and come back to us and talk to us, we're happy to do that. If you don't, tell me tonight, and we'll move forward. This is your decision. I, we, you make proffers, not us, so I...
We're fine. We're pushing for two weeks.
Okay.
Till last go talk.
We want to go with the two proffers.
Okay. All right. Excuse me. They would like to make the two proffers as originally stated, which is to construct the property in accordance with the renderings and to install the cameras on the exterior of the buildings. We can tell you that they will talk with the owners of the gas station to see what can possibly be done about the sign. If it is in violation of the sign ordinance, and certainly, they have some liability under that...
Sure.
Then that's going to be an issue we're going to have to deal with regardless of whether or not we make a proffer here or not.
Okay.
We're friends with them. We'll handle it civilly, and we'll, we'll make something and talk about it.
And I wasn't, I honestly was not trying to put a cog in anything. It just, it's been brought up by a number of residents, and since the property's under discussion, you know, compliance was, was a question that several neighbors had asked.
Sure.
Just recently, like, you know. I've, I had wondered about, was it estate right away? I didn't know for a long time who the, who the property belonged to.
Right. I can also tell you that this is an effort to try to improve the area overall there. The storage facility is just phase one. Phase two is, you know, is in the works to build what we hope will be a fairly nice retail area there. And if something can be done to reduce, you know, the overall pill of the place, well, that's sort of what we're trying to do here at this point as well. But officially, I would say we are making the two proffers.
Okay.
And that we are going to talk to the owners of the sign to see, you know, what can be done about that.
Okay. All right. I think we know where we are then.
Do we, do we go to the...
Yes, Mr. Kendrick.
Yeah. I want to read the proffer that I understand.
Please.
So that there's no misunderstanding again. That the applicant has proffered to construct the storage facility to be constructed on the property, so as to comply with the design and architect, ar, excuse me, aesthetic features as depicted in the exhibits that are attached. Are you comfortable with that?
Is that, is that how it's written?
No, no, no. He's reading from his ordinance on that. And I think, are you using the exhibits from the P and Z? Any guys, let, take a look at that.
These are the ones they sent.
Yeah, the green. Yep.
It's all these.
Right. Yeah, I was reading, we're, I'm talking about the letter that we sent you guys.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to draw an ordinance.
Yeah, it's different wording, but...
Yeah, it's different wording, but, uh, he's referring to exhibits.
These are the exhibits that are in the ordinance that was being published.
Yeah, absolutely, you're right about that.
That came from you.
That's right.
That is correct.
So that's still, that is still correct.
That is still correct.
The only other or, uh, proffer that you're making, and I'm reading from your letter, the owner will place cameras in and around the building as recommended in the, I don't, planning commission meeting. I don't know what that is, that's.
Those are, that's the security system.
Brady Wilson has, uh, recommended that.
Okay.
Well, I.
There's no recommendation.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, we just need some, if, if y'all wanna include that, we just need some language as to what you're describing so we know how to put it in the, the ordinance.
Yeah, how about I get you an exhibit to attach to?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Do y'all have something y'all can get me in terms of from security companies?
Sure.
Okay, all right, we'll send that forward.
Perfect. Okay. Hold on, I, I promise. Mr. Alamon.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I understand to some degree the, the hesitation with the previous proffer of limiting a blanket, uh, use, but there have been concerns about a hotel being built there, and so, would you be willing at all to proffer it won't be a hotel?
Proffering not to build a hotel is the same as proffering to build a storage facility there. It's a permanent restriction on the use of the property in and of itself.
Well, okay, so it is a lesser restriction, we can all agree on that, right?
Well, and this goes back to what I discussed with you guys previously, it's the plans and specifications, once they are submitted for a building permit, the building inspector for the city is going to be able to see that this, this is either the plans and specifications are going to be for a self-contained climate control storage facility, or it's gonna be for the worst hotel in the history of the world.
But just to, just to be clear, so that, again, we're all on the same page, that what, whatever, that for the same reason that you are arguing that it would affect financing, it goes beyond what they are about to build. And so I think what Mr. Alamon is, is asking is whether or not there would be a proffer to allow C five with the exception of a hotel. Now, that is a much lesser restriction than anything else because it would include everything else in C five. Whether you're willing to do it or not is completely up to you, that's, that's whether y'all wanna make that proffer. I just want us to be clear that that is not the same restriction that was proffered last time.
And what I can tell you, and what I am, why, the main reason why I'm afraid to make such a proffer tonight is without going and speaking with our lenders' representatives and getting an opinion from them, how it affects their appraisal of the value of the property, it's difficult for me to sit here and make that promise to you.
Would you need like two additional weeks to figure that out?
So the, so the situation is, I mean, we understand, we've spoken to some people, and, and I don't want a hotel, clearly we're already zoned for a hotel. The issue is, we can't even proffer to do a nail salon or anything that, not do, or shoe store or anything like that. Banks don't want any restrictions, they want free and clear. And these, these bank letters that we, we've sent state that, stated that.
They say may. So they don't, they don't say that, they don't necessarily say that you won't get.
I mean, nonetheless, we wouldn't go through.
And, and the restriction is different, the restriction of not building a hotel is way different than only limited to one single use. You have a broad list of things that, for whatever reason, if funding wasn't, um, it would be able to, and also, potentially you could try to get funding and then see how it goes, and if, and, and there are other issues, then you could potentially come back, right? If, if it didn't, for whatever reason, work out. But it is different, right? In, in limiting or prohibiting one single usage as opposed to saying that you can only build one thing on it.
And, and I'll just add, I know you guys are gonna respond, but I'll just add to Mr. Alamon's point. You know, we, we've obviously been talking with you guys for a while, and, you know, I think everybody's excited about something new and, and improving the area, for sure. What he's describing is something that was a consistent concern for residents, and I know you guys heard that too. And I, you know, I, I'm not a real estate attorney, I, I don't, I, you know, obviously don't, don't do that, don't have any experience with it, but my understanding from, from you guys is that you had already talked with banks, talked about lending, and I'm not sure if we're only limiting or restricting one potential purpose for that zoning, why that would have a substantial impact on whether or not we can get finance when we were already talking to, to banks and financial institution lenders about the specific purpose and intent for the property, which is the, the controlled climate, you know, storage facility. I, I'm not sure why that would, if they were gonna, if, if they were sure that they were gonna finance that, I'm not sure why saying that we're gonna take hotels out of the mix would make them balk at it if that was never even a consideration for your redevelopment. Does that make sense?
It does, it does, and, and so.
Cause you guys had said that you'd already talked to banks and financial institutions about the project in and of itself, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get your point. Andrew, that's just like, we can't proffer anything. We need the banks, anything that there's just writing, they, you can't proffer anything that is not, does not make sense to do. We don't wanna do a lot of things on the property, but we can't let it go. The banks have their way of underwriting certain things, and they wanna make sure that there's no restrictions at all. We have no intentions to do that, a hotel, but the hotel, it's already zoned for a hotel. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm confused on the whole scenario with that.
So, and again, this, this, I need some legal, you know, counsel on this, but is it possible for the reason to be contingent upon the funding being granted?
I don't think so. Uh, I think that would be, I think, I don't think that would be possible.
Okay.
And look, again, the proffer is up to you guys, and, and you've, you've produced letters, and the letters say that financing, you know, could be affected. They don't say you couldn't get financing or anything like that, they say that it could be affected. Whether it's affected by the, that proffer about a hotel, I can't tell you, I don't think anyone up here is a, is a banker or, or that y'all are seeking funding from, so I, I don't, I'm not trying to tell you one way or the other. I'm just trying to get what your proffer is, and if that's something that you're willing to consider, then we'll consider it.
So, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but we are currently zoned under the GUR, which allows for hotel motel use. And in the last meetings, we explained to you all, Mr. Jones, he reiterated, he said, do you not see any other use of that property? Sure, it could probably be a hotel motel, it won't be a high-end hotel, we can go ahead and guarantee that, okay? The fact of the matter is, there's nothing stopping us from doing a hotel now. We sat on that property upcoming seven years now, just a vacant hotel. So if it was gonna be a hotel, it would have already been one by now. We can still do it down the road, if this, if this, respectfully, if this gets denied, then we are pushed into no other choice but to do a motel there. That's all we have left, and that's the only thing that's viable for us to do. We've got a four-story concrete building there, that's four and a half million dollars worth of concrete that we're willing to bring down so we can develop this asset.
And we, we, we've met with a lot of people.
Uh, we've met with a lot of people, and we've had a lot of support. Andrew Carlos, a lot of people that showed up to the open forums, and we're excited by making this happen. Our intentions are not to change plans or anything, we were, we're ready to go full steam ahead, and, you know, we're, we've gone through almost, what, two and a half years, I think we've met.
Sure.
Yeah, a long time, and, you know, we're ready to make this go forward, and, you know, talks about hotels not in our, our, our agenda.
I understand, and, but you understand that, again, the proffer is not just about what you're about to do, it's about that land. It, it, for the same reason that, that you're talking about it affect financing, it's, it goes beyond y'all, it goes, it runs with the land. And so I think that was the reason for the question, it wasn't about you not building a storage facility, just so we're clear. But, again, that's, that's a proffer you're willing to make or you're not willing to make.
Yeah.
Did you have something else, Mr. Alamon?
If y'all are willing, make, that's fine, I was just offering the question because it's something that's come up.
I understand.
It's the biggest concern in the community as to what it's.
All I know is we're excited about getting this rezoning so we can bring that building down. I mean, that's.
Look, we, we get it, we, we've heard that, we've met with the, the residents, we made a lot of friends with a lot of the residents here, and we're very appreciative of that relationship we have with them, and at the end of the day, we have two options, we have three options. Of course, the motel hotel thing is there. Is that something we wanna do, especially on that exit? Absolutely not, because of, number one, you've got a tremendous amount of hotels in Homewood. On this exit, on Oxmoor and on Lakeshore, and now you've got two more on the other side, okay? The residents don't wanna see that there. We get it, we see the problems you guys have with these other hotels, we get it. We don't wanna be a part of that, we wanna do something that's positive for the area, adds value to the area, increases property value for not just neighboring properties, the residents' properties, and this is what's gonna do it, I guarantee you that. We're planning to bring something that the community can engage in. A hotel, nobody in this neighborhood in Homewood is gonna stay at these hotels. Our storage facility, retail, sports bar, the whole community is gonna be engaging, in fact, the entire metro area will be coming west Homewood to engage in business there. And that's what we wanna do for our site, for the area.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we're still at the point of the two proffers.
Correct.
Uh, and that's it, correct?
That is correct.
All right.
And, and if I can make just a very quick point.
Sure.
I think it's something Mike said, you know, really, um, it's, if, we don't need, we don't really need to say we're not going to build a motel hotel because right now, we can do that, and we're standing in front of this council requesting permission to do something completely new.
I, I understand, we're, we're, again, that, that, that's, that's not really what we're talking about, is, and I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you that, anything about building the storage facility. We're talking about zoning, that's a different issue, so I, I want us to stay, at least try to stay on track here with that, so. All right, so, uh, with that, because we are going to have a different ordinance, I'm going to both open and close this public hearing really quickly. I'll open it, and then I'm gonna close it because there's no point considering an ordinance that is no longer good because y'all have changed your mind. So, now we will go back and, uh, publish the new ordinance. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, when will that place the public hearing?
Well, it depends on when, when you, when you're gonna send me the security stuff.
Yeah, I was just having a meeting, I'm waiting for it.
How quickly can you get the security stuff?
Tomorrow.
I have to get it. Fourteenth, twenty eighth. Can we get a letter or something?
Counsel, we. Uh, security, yeah.
It can be the twenty-eighth if you get me the security stuff tomorrow.
Good.
Would that be fifteen days?
It's gotta be published twice a week, and then more than fifteen days from the last publication. So just take my word for it, twenty-eighth, the first day it can be legally published.
So, I thought council was on June seventh and twenty-first.
No, we will meet on the, the second, second and fourth Mondays.
Okay, and fourteen and twenty-eight.
So the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. Guys, look, we're, we're gonna set it for the twenty-eighth if you can get it to, to Mr. Kendrick tomorrow. If not, it's gonna, it's gonna be longer than that.
It'll push it till the first meeting in July if we're not able to.
Absolutely, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
July the twelfth? Is that the date you want?
Oh, we can, we can.
June twenty-eighth is what they, we were.
No, 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 they said to the first meeting in July.
No, no, I'm sorry.
They said if they don't get everything done, then will that be the next?
But you have to do it tonight, after you know.
Yeah, we gotta set it tonight is the problem.
That's right.
So if we, so we can either do the twenty-eighth, and the problem is if, if it doesn't get done and doesn't get published in time, now we gotta come back and we've gotta reset the date again, which puts us off longer as opposed to just picking the twelfth tonight, but it, I'm, I'm happy to do either depending on when y'all think you can get it done.
Real quick, on the proffer for the cameras, are you just wanting pictures of cameras, is that?
No.
No, it's security.
We need some detail of what you're proffering that you're gonna put in, there has to be some exhibit to be attached.
Let's do the, let's do the last one of this month.
Okay, the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Like, for example, if you have a quote from a security company, it's gonna put them up.
Yeah, absolutely.
We just attach that, and that'll, that'll handle it, I think.
No problem.
Okay, so we're, so you think you can do it tomorrow, and we should set it for the twenty-eighth? All right, then we will re, or we will set that public hearing, uh, on the new ordinance for June twenty-eighth. All right, that's it, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, sixteen oh three twenty-one, request for consideration of AT&amp;T easement at two thirty-four Goodwin Crest Drive. Uh, and we start with an update from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes. I'm sorry, this is for the sixteen oh three twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I don't.
I wanna say we sent it.
Can we see, I don't know, I was gonna, can we skip out and go on?
Sure, I, I wanna say the, the committee sent it out pending, a review by Mr. Kendrick and making sure there was no.
I have the document, I sent it to you.
You do have the document and send it to everybody, okay?
With the legal, the correct legal?
Yep. So, Melody, would you like us to let you confirm that before we vote on it?
It's just up to y'all, I don't know why.
I tell you what, we'll, we're gonna come back to it just to make sure, okay?
I'm not sure why it's not on here, so.
No problem. Uh, okay, next item, oh nine oh five twenty-one, request to authorize mayor to sign a contract with Sane Associates for engineering consulting work on Mamie Foster Eighteenth Street project, brought to us by Kale Smith, our city engineer. All right, and a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, the finance committee, uh, met on May seventeenth and voted three to zero to recommend approval up to two thousand dollars out of bond proceeds, which is, uh, account number twenty-six dash eleven dash five eight nine one four five uh, for the Eighteenth Street, uh, uh, project.
All right, thank you, so, as I understand it, this, this resolution is both to sign the contract and for the budget amendment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so we have a, a motion from finance, any questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero, somehow the first resolution of the night, twenty-one seventy-two. All right, next item, eleven oh five twenty-one, request to authorize mayor to sign temporary construction easement uh, with Barber Properties as well as Ed's Pet World, um, and we will have another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the, uh, finance committee met, voted three to zero to recommend approval of temporary construction easement at Barber Properties as well as Ed's Pet World. Uh, so three to zero out of finance.
Okay, thank you, and we will take these one at a time, uh, so we have a motion for each from finance, we'll start with Barber's. Any questions or comments about that one? Not all in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
That is eleven to zero and be resolution twenty-one seventy-three, and then we'll move on to Ed's Pet World, we've got a motion for that from finance as well. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be twenty-one seventy-four.
President, I, I have an answer to your question, I mean, to my, my confusion.
Yeah. This is back on sixteen oh three twenty-one.
Sorry, yes, sir, Council Wolverton, um, reported out already on the five-ten agenda that they met on five-three, that's why I went on his minutes from the seventeenth, and we carried it over at council.
Got it.
It was carried over.
Carried over at council.
For AT&amp;T on the, but he'd already reported out, so it was on five-three that they met, Eric, they met on five-three and recommended five to zero to approve with conditions upon corrections.
Perfect, thank you, Ms. Salter, I appreciate it. Just in an abundance of caution because of the confusion, let's go ahead and do a motion in a second. Motion for Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second for Mr. Harden? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero and will be twenty-one seventy-five.
It was John's, it was Harden's.
It was.
Okay, thanks, sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, next item, oh one oh five twenty-one, request to authorize improvements for striping parking on Oxmoor Road, uh, brought to us by Randy Hambley of our traffic department, and we will start with a report from public safety, Mr. Waltney.
The committee met, uh, invited them to here to recommend approval and to share the cost of our latest project not to exceed two thousand dollars, which was made by Councilor Nels and seconded by Councilor Hart.
All right, thank you very much, we have a motion from public safety, any questions or comments from anyone? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be twenty-one seventy-six. All right, uh, oh three oh five twenty-one, request to work and make improvements in city right of way to the intersection of Shades Road and Forest Drive, brought to us by Clinton Cook and Counselor Sims, uh, and we'll start with a report from Public Works, uh, Wolverton.
Do you have this one open?
I hope so. Okay, this is oh three oh five twenty-one, correct?
It is. Okay.
Yeah, so on, let's see, last, last week, um, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval. A motion was made by Councilor Nels and seconded by Councilor Hart.
All right, thank you very much, uh, and I know that, uh, Mr. Cook is, uh, on Zoom, but I think we, uh, have a motion, since we have a motion from Public Works, Well, Mr. Sims, do you want to just explain what this is? The community might be interested in that.
Sure, President Wyatt, so this is an effort by the neighborhoods, or sorry, the neighbors in the community to do a memorial to Robin Hearn. And what they're looking to do is actually put a memorial tree in right of way near the intersection of Shades Road and Forest Drive. So a number of them have come together to, they're going to purchase, I think it's a tulip magnolia, and also looking to do a plaque in honor of her. And so I think it's a fantastic gesture and I, you know, am, am supportive of, of their efforts. And Clinton Cook is kind of the spokesperson for the neighborhood, or the neighbors on this. So if he wants to say anything, be more than happy to let him say something.
Yeah, Clinton, I don't know, you're welcome to say something if you'd like to.
Hold on.
Brian, is that him talking?
Yeah, it is.
Sorry, hang on.
So we, we seem to have some audio issues, but.
No, I got it, I got it, hang on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Clinton.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better, if you could just speak loudly.
Yeah, so the, the neighbors just really are looking, Robin meant a lot to us and she was really involved in the community and everybody's just looking for anything to do. And this just seemed like the right thing and something that we all want to just have something to memorialize her and also a reminder just that life's short and don't take it for granted. So we just figure every time we drive by that, we'll, we'll be able to remind ourselves of that and our kids of that.
All right, thank you, Clinton. All right, so we have a motion from Public Works, any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve.
Oh, we don't even need one. We, we got a motion from the committee, so we're good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be 2177. All right, and that brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. All right, which brings us to other new business, 150521, request for consideration of an ABC 140 special event retail license for Dimitri's Barbecue Inc., DBA, Dimitri's Lot Party Fire and Smoke 2021, located at the parking lot of 1901 28th Avenue South, brought to us by Melody Salter. This does not require a fire inspection since it's a temporary event. We have already received a letter of no objection from the police. So this, as I understand it, should be ready, it's not, it's not even, doesn't, does not even have to be contingent on anything. So it's ready to go and I would entertain a motion and second for approval.
Need to approve.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I did have one question.
Yep.
Ms. Salter, do we have the hours for this event, being right next to Soho and residents above? Wanted to make sure there's not going to be any, any impact to the neighbors.
If they put it on the application, I don't have it with me, I'm sorry, I have to go. Hey, Andy, I will just say in the past, it's kind of been in the afternoon and I think the penultimate is the fireworks. So I think once the fireworks happen, that's pretty much the end point.
Gotcha, okay, I, I just.
Mr. President, do they need an ABC license at all?
That's what this is.
That's what this is.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Andrus, do we have a second? Second for Ms. Nelms, any other questions or comments?
Do I need to let them know a time that they need to have it sent over? Or if they, I don't know if they asked for a time on the application, but do I need to clarify?
10 o'clock, maybe?
Well, I mean, look, if we, if we're concerned about it, we can just carry it over and get that information for the next time.
I mean, it could just be, it could just be the noise limit, it's about to fall in the noise limit, it already exists.
I like Council Hardin's recommendation to put a cap on it, so there's not any issues with noise. Because the last thing I want to have is a party next door causing impact for the neighbors here.
What time do you think?
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM.
Okay. Ms. Andrus, does that sound like what your motion meant?
I will amend my motion to include a 10 o'clock curfew.
And Ms. Nelms, was that your second as well? Okay, all right, so with a 10 o'clock, in, at least a, an end time of 10 o'clock or earlier.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Ms. Prin.
Yep.
I don't like the word curfew. The, the end time of the event, I would, I will vote for this motion, but if you, we're not, I don't want to enact a curfew.
Please note that the word curfew will not be used.
I just said a cap, is that okay?
I did say curfew, I meant.
Thank you, we needed a good laugh.
We appreciate that.
That's my question too, are we ending the event or alcohol sales?
Well, it would end, I believe this item is just for the license, so it would end alcohol sales. The event would be governed by the noise ordinance, but yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that's 11 to zero and that does not require, well, does it require a resolution now that we put a cap on it?
That's the only one.
All right. 160521, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 11, 2021 through May 24, 2021, brought to us by Robert Riggett, our finance director and assistant city clerk, and Melody Salter, our city clerk and assistant finance director. Mr. Jones?
I'd yield to Mr. Harden.
Mr. President Wyatt, I did have a chance to review the, the vouchers and had some questions that I got answered by Ms. Burdette. And so I moved to approve the vouchers for, for the May 11th through May 24th.
Thank you very much. So that's a motion for Mr. Harden and a second for Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero and will be 2178. All right, that brings us to 170521, request for consideration of ABC 050 retail beer off premises only and 070 retail table wine off premises only licenses for SD Investments and Developments LLC, DBA Homewood Shell located at 208A Oxmore Road and ABC 011 liquor, no, I'm sorry, lounge retail liquor, class two package license for SD Investments and Developments LLC, DBA Homewood Package located at 208B Oxmore Road, brought to us by Melody Salter. We are going to carry this over without objection, there were a couple of questions that we had, so we will deal with that next time. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Keeping pretty brief tonight. Just want to let everybody know that the Memorial Day flags are going to be going up on Thursday of, of this week. Working with Randy Hambley and his group to get those put out there. So, you know, I hope you guys all have a wonderful Memorial Day weekend and remembrance of all those military who have passed away for, for our freedoms, of course. And then second is, I'm in contact with Robbie Lee from the Exceptional Foundation to set up a softball game between the Exceptional Foundation and you wonderful group of people. So hopefully some of you guys have some hand-eye coordination because I certainly do not. And, but I'll, I'll get you guys a, a date on that and, and we'll go out there. And we've only done the softball game once, but it was a heck of a time. So hopefully everybody can come out there and then, of course, next spring, we'll get back into the, the basketball world where I think we do a little bit better job. So, but that's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Can we do it after June 9th? Just a question? I mean, it'll probably be after that at this point, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I would say, I would probably say after, I'd say probably more like.
July.
I mean, excuse me, middle of July.
Okay, thank you.
My guess.
Yeah, that way it'll be nice and hot. All right, Mr. Waltney?
I am not going to set P and D because currently the slate is.
I'm glad you're not going to set P and D because that's not your committee.
I'm sorry. Public safety.
Thank you for not saying that for me.
Did I not tell you I wanted to trade committees with you? It's been a long day. I'm not setting public safety. I had P and D in the brain. I'm sure you're relieved, Jennifer. So whoever wants that coveted slot after finance is available. I just wanted to give a really quick update from the BOE. They had their last board meeting last Tuesday. And just some things that they've had going on recently, they've had an evening with the superintendent with EL families and a partnership with HICA, so thank you, sir. They've also worked on youth mental health first aid training recently. We are working on getting Dr. Hefner in for a state of the schools with us, council, it'll probably be sometime this summer. And they have also hosted a meet greet for Dr. Steele and they basically just shared some updates on their COVID dashboard and all of the numbers look really good. So if you have any additional questions, y'all, let me know, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gere.
Yes, just a shout out real quick to the Arts Council. I don't know if y'all noticed, but they have been placing new art exhibits on the first floor every month. And this month is a Sims Garden in Bloom exhibit. It's lovely and they were able to reuse our awesome float decorations from We Love Homewood Day. And anyway, it's just really creative without spending a lot of money to bring some fun art to City Hall and we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Alamon.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't think we recognize, but we did, we did have our first town hall meeting about three weeks ago. So I appreciate, well, we, we appreciate all the residents that got on there and then we had a few fellow council members jump on for parts of that. So I, I don't know that I was going to set, and if I did, I was going to need somebody else to fill in for Public Works. We still have the Spire franchise agreement and just a Greensprings update. So I don't know that, unless you have any inkling on the Spire thing.
I think you can probably do without.
Okay.
I think we'll get the, we've got a Greensprings update and another one too.
Finance or something too.
Unless there's, and I don't, Mr. Kendrick, unless there's something on the horizon with Spire.
No, I'll set Spire agreement to.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think you're fine, right?
Okay, so I will not set P and D.
I'm glad you won't set P and D either.
I did it too.
What's up?
There will be no Public Works.
Yeah.
So, there will be no Public Works. I hope everybody has a great Memorial Day weekend and we will be traveling. So you can pray for us traveling cross-country with, with our entire crew, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
I'm not going to set P and D. And happy Memorial Day and thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Finance will be at 5:00. We, yes, we only have four items, so.
You got all the referral.
I was trying to say, this was the only time I ever remember the entire committee referral agenda going to one or many.
Exactly, exactly. But I hope everyone has a safe and fun Memorial Day, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Oh, yeah, it is me, sorry. Actually, this is crazy, but I'm not even going to have to set special issues again. I don't know what's happening in the world, but I'm okay with it at this stage. So I'm not going to set it. And I promise, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to mom brag anymore after this, this is the last one, I promise. Also, I have another child who is also equally a great kid, just want to put that out there. It's not like, there's only one kid in my family. But last week, Hardy was selected as the boys' outstanding soccer player of the year by the downtown Kiwanis Club. So he got to participate on Zoom, they did not have, they actually had the meeting in person, but they didn't have the kids in person. But he participated on Zoom from the beach and I did too. So anyway, it was really cool and we're kind of hoping it's a plaque or something so we can have something other than a screenshot of the thing. But anyway, that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nelms.
Yes, I want to just give a, a thanks to all of y'all. You guys always so supportive of the council members who all had seniors graduating. I mean, many of y'all were there for anything virtual that my girls were graduating from or presenting from. And so we had, of course, two graduations, one from graduate school and one from high school. And you guys have been so supportive of, you know, me and Allison Berry and John and Jennifer with all of our graduates. And I really appreciate y'all, you know, treating them like they're your nieces and nephews. I just wanted to say thanks, thanks for all of that and all of the parties and everything y'all attended for us and came to or, you know, you know, did something virtual, it's, it's just really appreciated.
Ms. Andrews.
I will set P and D, so tell me again, how much, how much time you need? 30 minutes, okay, so wow, 5:30, how about that? All right, I'll take it. It's not going to happen again anytime soon. Okay, I did want to mention, I just thought graduation went so great. I mean, I just thought they did such a great job, this is Dr. Hefter's first outing. And I told him afterwards, I was like, man, that was awesome. And he said, do you know how stressed out I have been about the weather for three solid weeks? I was like, I know, but it was like, you know, it's perfect at the football stadium, so I don't know, I thought it went great. So it was a lot, a lot of fun and the school board, Board of Education did a great job. Let's see, no more unified command, that has been demobilized, so no more updates from the unified command on that. I wanted to give a shout out to our friend, Ally Phelps, for being a finalist for Alabama State Teacher of the Year. And she's also got a little fundraiser going on right now, if anybody can shoot some, a book her way for her library that she's putting together for her EL students. She's tried to build up a book nook there for her, she kind of got wiped out during the pandemic, she sent a lot of books home with kids and, and is sort of trying to replenish that. So if you need that information, I can send that on its way. Have to, I have to challenge Council Alamon, you're next, with the HFD. I have to give props to Council Wolverton for actually beating sitting firefighters in the two rounds. I want to thank Council Waltney for coming out and holding my hand and giving me water and, God, y'all, it was so hard. It was so hard.
There was no hand-holding, I was chasing you.
Well, it was really, really hard.
Council Andrus was blazing a trail through that course.
Well, until I got to the tire and then I absolutely fell apart. And then when I finished, I couldn't get under the tire with the thing on my back, I couldn't get under the tire. It was just pulling me back and you had to drag it 75 feet and by the time I dropped it, I just, I said, get all this off of me right now and just get the mask off and get everything off of me right now, I'm freaking out. So I had to take a break and drink some water, which is what you do in a real fire. I mean, that's what you do, like, I need a break, people, I need some water. So, anyway, it was hard, 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 that was my workout for the day, it was really hard. So I just want to give a shout out to the men and, we don't have any women right now, but HFD, man, they're just incredible. Like I said, then you throw in a fire and you throw in darkness, it can be tough stuff, so. Anyway, Council Alamon, you got next. That's all I got.
Mr. Harden?
I also appreciate graduation and it's gone and, and those seniors are all off to new places. I also want to continue to give a shout out to my ward mate who does such an incredible job of keeping our ward up. I mean, we've got, of course, it's our turn on Windsor Drive to be a mess and trying to keep up with the Birmingham Water Works, it's not fun, but.
Well, they're right in front of your house right now, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a chocolate mess, but, but people on, on Yorkshire and Rumsen have been fighting this for a long time. So, but I'm very grateful for, for Council Andrus who absolutely, every week, sends something out to give everybody an update. And that's very helpful in our ward, that's it.
President Wyatt, can I just, actually did want to mention something?
Sure.
And thank you, Council Waltney, for reminding me, but Superintendent Heffner is amazing and he met with our immigrant families. But I also want to give a special shout out to the English language learning teachers themselves. We have tremendous teachers in Homewood and the families are grateful to them, so I just wanted to mention that, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, so a couple of things, one, as everyone has sort of alluded to, Memorial Day is coming up, so we have a Monday off, which happens to be, also be a fifth Monday, so we didn't get the benefit of that one so much. But at any rate, City Hall will be closed that day. Secondly, we completed the three public forums on zoning. Thank you to everyone who came and voiced their opinion and asked questions and all of that stuff. So we will continue to work with our consultant about those comments and seeing what we can come up with and then going through the formal process here at some point in the near future. Lastly, I also appreciate graduation and, and what the Board of Education did and getting us out there. And I've, I've done, I've done this twice now, once inside and once outside, the outside was really cool. I mean, I know you got the weather issue, but it was really, really cool.
It was really hot, you had a tie.
Well, some of us were smart enough not to wear ties. But it, it really was. But it, it, it really was, uh, amazing, and then, um, I don't know if y'all know this, at least according to my graduate, uh, they were supposed to, like, process back out.
Oh, I know, they were.
Yeah, um, that there, yeah, there, there was a whole process for them to process back out. They, they figured, we're graduated, we're done, we're gonna do whatever we want to, so they first threw their hats in the air, which they're not supposed to do, and then, oh, yeah, yeah, you can't do that anymore, you can't do, you, those things can cause damage, yeah, it's pretty, so, yeah, they, they haven't allowed that in years, but this class decided, yeah, well, we're outside, we went through COVID, what the hell?
I heard there was an Andrus boy that led the charge on that.
So, yeah, they threw their hats in the air, and then they all just started hugging each other, um, and it, instead of processing out, and the music was playing, and no one thought anything of it, so, um, it, I thought it was great, um, so, anyway, thank you to the Board of Education for, uh, getting us to that point, 'cause it, it really was a wonderful, memorable day for, for all of us, so. Uh, with that, we will, uh, adjourn this meeting, and we will be back here on, for, uh, committees on the seventh and a meeting on the fourteenth. Thanks, everybody.